...live in Spanish. To listen to the Spanish interpretation, please call 508-924-5155. Again, that's 508-924-5155. We invite you to focus on the screen for the Spanish version of this announcement.
Hay una línea telefónica simultánea disponible para las personas que desean escuchar la reunión de la junta en español. Si desea escuchar la reunión en español, llame al 508-924-5155.
For anyone unable to join us live, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on PGCP's YouTube channels. Lastly, for recording purposes, the chairman reminds all board members to ensure that their microphones are turned on when speaking. Board prayer. Board member Ajay Kaya, please lead us in a board prayer.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father... I just want, I just wanted to pray, you know? That's all it was. Don't worry about that. All right. Ms. McMillan, please call the roll.
Ms. Ajay Kaya?
Present.
Dr. Anderfeld?
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Present.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Goins McCants?
Present.
Dr. Moss?
Present.
Ms. Olivo?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
There are ten present.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. McMillan. Moving on to seven point oh, the adoption of the meeting agenda. If there are no objections, Dr. Moss?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to include a discussion item on the Office of Integrity and Compliance.
Thank you. We would like to make the adjustment to add the addendum to the agenda. Ms. McMillan, please take a roll call vote.
Ms. Ajay Kaya?
Aye.
Dr. Anderfeld?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Goins McCants?
Aye.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Olivo?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
There are ten in the affirmative.
Thank you. Motion is adopted. Are there any corrections to the June 26, 2025 board meeting minutes? There being no objections, the meeting minutes are approved. Let's pause for the PGCP's Spotlight. The chairman recognizes the communication teams for the Spotlight.
I can tell you that there's no place like Prince George's County Public Schools anywhere
SLI is our Summer Leadership Institute, and during this time, we meet, we calibrate on the vision of our school district and the vision of our school leader, Dr. Joseph, just so we can get some good information to take back to our schools so we can move students forward.
I try to be intentional about storytelling and making the connections on personal because this work to all of us should be personal.
SLI is very important. It is a time for collaboration. It's time for us to calibrate around the work that has to be done, and it's also a time that we can really begin to infuse with each other and build relationships, particularly those that we're not as familiar with.
Well, so I'm a new principal, and for me, I naturally do better through collaboration. And so, being able to learn and connect and reflect with people who are passionate and are in it for the right reasons is, it fills my cup. And I need to make sure that my cup is full so that I am leading and giving my people the resources and guidance that they need to be successful. And so, so far, it's been really great.
Right, I mean, I mean, we all have journeys, but we know, you know, through God's grace and through education, we're here, right? We're here, we're strong, and we are powerful.
The purpose of SLI is not only to get what we're going to be focusing on this school year, but it's also just connection, networking, learning new things, what other schools are doing, what some of our partners are doing, and then just being able to be re-energized and re-engage and just be really excited about the upcoming school year.
And what I try to remind people of is we've got a boldly walk in our power. Like, we cannot be afraid because we've got children who need excellence by design every day.
One of the things that really gets to me is his energy. He's ready to work right now. He wants to, his energy is palpable, and I just want to take that energy and bring it to my building.
He really wants us to be reflective, to make sure that we're involving parents and families and everything.
When I went into that school every day, it was personal. The professional wasn't even on my mind. I'm going to be professional, but the success or failure of my students was personal.
This year, I'm super excited about change because anything that's not changing and evolving is dying. And so, I'm excited about the possibilities, about the progress, about the production of our students, and what that will mean in this year at this time in this space, and the ability for us to recreate, reinvent, and innovate what success looks like for us at this time in space.
I am excited about the new learning we are getting this year, the new direction in which we are moving, and just to embrace the vision and mission of our school district for our students.
I am extremely excited about the new leadership this school year and how we are moving together as one team.
I would have to say, hope is what I'm really excited about this year.
The thing I'm really most excited about this year is building deeper relationships with students, you know, continue to open in diplomas one door at a time, and those opportunities for our students is just bringing me a lot of excitement to really think about how our kids are going to continue to grow and thrive at Oxon Hill High School.
I am excited about building school culture at Tyke Elementary School. I am looking forward to helping teachers learn and moving student achievement.
What I'm excited about this year is that there seems to be a real focus on the internal talent that we have in Prince George's County, that there's real excitement about what we can do and that they're empowering us to be able to actually do it. They're giving us the guidelines, yet they're allowing us to add what we need to for our individual schools, and I'm really excited about that.
We've got a function with a chip on our shoulders, if you will, and show people how good we know we are.
Great job communications team, as always. Moving to the report of the chairman. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2025-2026 school year. As we begin this new chapter, we're excited for the opportunities ahead and are grateful, and we're grateful for the hard work that's going into preparing for our schools. So I wanted to take a moment to applaud the staff and everybody who's got the buildings up to par, up to cold, making sure that we're ready to receive our students next week. So I want to give a round of applause. We remain committed to creating a safe, inclusive, and engaging learning environments where every student can thrive. Thank you to our staff for your dedication, to our families, for your partnership, and to our students. You are the heart of everything we do. Here's to a successful and inspiring year ahead. Now, on a more somber note, at this time, I would like to call for a moment of silence as we honor the memory of the following PGCP's staff, family, and community members. Lisa R. Smith Parker, Guidance Counselor, Carrollton Elementary School. George C. Trezor, CAD Operator, Building Services. George Edmonds, Material Handler, Printing Services. Karen D. Mack, Guidance Counselor, Charles Carroll Middle School. Thank you. Now onto announcements. The board informs the public of the following upcoming meetings. Please turn your attention to the screen for the full list of meetings. Please continue to check the board webpage for updates and more information. Now we move into public comments. The chairman recognizes the registered speakers for the following public comments. To our registered speakers, you are allotted three minutes to share your remarks. Speaking time may not be transferred to another individual. The board will not engage in dialogue during this portion of the meeting. Speakers are expected to refrain from using profanity or derogatory language. A warning will be issued once. Continued misconduct may result in the speaker being muted or removed from the meeting. To support a professional and courteous environment, speakers are encouraged to refer to individuals by their titles such as chair, board member, superintendent, principal, rather than by name. This evening, the board received two public comment requests from individuals who wished to speak in person. There were no written or pre-recorded videos. Our first public comment tonight is Mr. Timothy Myers, individual.
Thank you, and welcome back, or welcome to each of you. A lot has changed since the last board meeting in this room. One thing hasn't. Even in moments of disagreement, PGCP's has always been bigger than any one of us or any one person. For our children's sake, PGCP's is too important to fail. Our greatness has always been our students, our parents, and all the hard-working staff from the cabinet, to the cafeteria, to the classroom, who make this system a success. We are strongest with the power of "we." Success starts by celebrating PGCP's leadership on school construction. I thank the interim superintendent for his remarks at the Hyattsville Elementary groundbreaking, and fellow District Three parents who did what it took to get Phase Two passed 23 months ago. Success is continuing our national leadership on climate action and being Maryland's leader in green schools. It's unwavering support for our immigrant communities, making clear schools are sanctuaries where every family is welcome and protected. It's expanding our Safe Passage Program because every child has the right to get to and from school safely. Two actions the interim superintendent can take. Hold county officials accountable by demanding proper staffing and coordination on crossing guards, and let's enact the county's full school pedestrian safety plan. Success means continued academic progress, supporting educators in their professional development, reducing their workload, finally winning back promised collaborative time. And it's making sure every family with special needs or an IEP can exercise their right to a quality education with the resources they need in a neighborhood school where they live. We cannot bus our way to equity. Finally, getting big wins means building up parent engagement and advocacy. This moment is not a battle over education policy or funding. We're in a fight to save public education itself. Winning will take a permanent professional campaign and going on offense. That starts with this board creating a robust legislative agenda, your own agenda, then working as a team to sell it. Celebrate every success, win each news cycle, connect every success to the funding that made it possible. Make PGCP's the biggest force in Annapolis next session. That is the power of "we," and we can always do more together. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Lisa Butler McDougall? Thank you. Now for their superintendent report. The chairman recognizes Dr. Joseph for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman Jackson. I can tell you, it's great to be back. It really is. We are, I have been so excited over this past month about the great work that's happening in Prince George's County Public Schools and the possibilities of our future. So, I'll talk a little bit about readiness, and then I want to share some, some new insights, and then I'll give Dr. Coleman an opportunity to jump in with some things. But to start, I'll say, over the past two weeks, executive staff have visited all 201 schools. Principals and school teams report that buildings are prepared, schedules are set, and supports are in place. We're ready to welcome approximately our 132 beautiful students back next week with a clear focus on safe schools, a strong instruction, and excellent customer service. As we move into this year, you know, in the spirit of radical transparency, the priority and school staffing vacancy dashboards have been created to provide a real-time count of total positions, unfilled roles, and vacancy rates across educators and school-based staff. So, if you go to our website now, you'll see that we have this new accountability dashboard. This was important because you can't manage a secret, and we've had challenges in our district with vacancies that have resulted in, I believe, it's been a root cause to some of the performance issues that we've had and some of the challenges. But now, our public will be able to see where we are in the aggregate as a district, and school by school, you can go and look at vacancies. This dashboard is connected to our Oracle system, so once a position is filled, this dashboard will automatically be updated. And we feel this will allow us to be clear about where we need to continue to provide focus and continue to do the work to ensure that if we don't have positions filled, we have plans to ensure that our learners are getting a quality education within our buildings. And so, this is not only linked to the district website. We recognize most parents don't go to the district website as much as they do their school website. So, you go to any school website, you will see this also on that website, and they'll be able to pull the information for their individual schools through a drop-down menu there. So we have it both in our, on our district site, but it's also on all school sites to In addition, we launched a public 100-day entry plan progress tracker that displays actions, timelines, and statuses across our six priorities. Strategic Alignment, Talent, Academics, The Blueprint for Maryland's Future, Community Engagement, and Operations. When you go to this website, you'll see if we can start with Area 1 here, which was Strategic Alignment. You can see, we have three items in the first 30 days that were not completed, and that's a result of the fact that the board was just, we just came back. So we'll be sure by the 100 days to turn that yellow blue as you're now back and you're energized and we have plenty of work to do. As you go to the second area, which was Talent, you see, and I want to, I want to acknowledge our Human Resources Department because we're starting this year off with a 93% fill rate for our teachers and staff, and I think that's a tremendous amount of work that's been done. Dr. Baldwin, thank you, and your entire department for all the tremendous work that you've done this summer, working towards that. As you look, even at the track, I also want to acknowledge that we are, we had about an, was it an 89% fill rate for our bus drivers, which is another, I think, round of applause here. We have down to less than 100 bus drivers that still need to be filled. So there's still work to do, we'll still have delays, but it's much better than it has been in, in previous years, and we'll have plans for that. But if we go to the third area there, which was the academics, again, our team, and this isn't, know that this isn't work that I do by myself. The reason, you know, we have been able to aggressively address a lot of the challenges is because we have just an extraordinary executive team that's been working diligently to ensure that the things we said we were going to do, we actually are doing. And so, again, I would like to give our executive staff a round of applause for the tremendous work that you have been doing over these past, I guess, 40 days now. So again, what's important here, we won't have to go through all of them, but for each area, we've identified where we are and color-coded it. The goal is by the time we get to the 100-day, we'll have those actions done, and I'd happily, you know, speak in detail about any of the actions that are there. But again, this is also real-time, so as we complete things and we complete it, it automatically updates. So, the public, if you're wondering, what are those folks in SAS are doing, feel free to go to the website, at least over these next 100 days, and it's very clear what we have been working on. You know, these two public trackers, the vacancy dashboard and the 100-day progress tracker, you know, aren't just websites, they're commitments. They make our work legible, our promises visible, and our progress measurable. You know, transparency is an equity strategy. When families see how we deploy talent and monitor progress, trust grows and outcomes And again, as we move towards these next 100 days, I mean, we are committed to visible learning. We want to make sure that our goals are clear, that we're frequently monitoring and doing progress checks, and we're publicly reporting on results. It's our goal to have greater communication, you know, faster responses, consistent updates from central office and schools and customer service to ensure that we're honoring every family, and higher achievement. We want to put a tight focus on our early literacy work as we kick off this year and our numeracy, acceleration for multilingual learners and our students with disabilities, and expanded pathways for our secondary schools. So I'd like to thank the Board of Education for your unwavering commitment to excellence and the culture of accountability. With your partnership, this will be a year where every classroom is ready, every family is informed, and every child is seen, and where our transparency invites our community to hold us and one another to higher standards. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Coleman so he can provide an update to you related to some of the emergency nature of some of the contracts that are on our consent agenda. Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Dr. Joseph, and board members, good evening, members of the PGCP's staff and members of the public. So the Purchasing and Supply Services Department is working to amend the spending parameters for contracts moving forward. One of the immediate results of this adjustment for PGCP's was our Maintenance Department had several contracts that are listed here this evening that were immediately impacted because we are now at the board-approved spending limit, and contractors had to immediately stop work. This directly threatened our ability to open schools next week and to maintain them properly. So the BASs on the agenda, or Board Action Sumories on the agenda for your review, are requesting an increase in the contract limit for selected contracts to stay in compliance with the board-approved spending limits for the period of performance. And I would like to give one example of this immediate impact in the emergency nature of what we're discussing here this evening. Frederick Douglass High School is one of our high schools in our district. Hyattsville Elementary School is also one of our schools. Hyattsville Elementary School, as we know, is being demolished and a new building built in its place. As part of that process, we remove any infrastructure that we can utilize in other locations. So the boilers were removed from Hyattsville Elementary School to then be reinstalled at Frederick Douglass because they're in better condition than the boilers at Frederick Douglass. One of the contracts listed here, I think it's 15.16 on the agenda, is for contracted services for boiler repair. The contractor, knowing we were at the limit, we had to immediately tell them to stop work. That meant that the boilers that were at Frederick Douglass to be installed in time for heating season, we were not going to move forward with that work. The time to get the heating season, or get ready for the heating season is now. We cannot wait until October when we cross over into needing the boilers to work. Even waiting until September would be problematic. So the contracts that you see as a part of this request are, are all a part of those types of emergencies that we needed to have in place so that we have the authority to address and work with those contractors to ensure a smooth opening and a maintenance period sufficient for us to, again, address the procurement methodology moving forward.
So I know there are a few board members with lights on, so I want to make sure that I create this space for the board members to talk. So I see 15 and 16, I think that is Board Member Sakia Goins McCants, and followed by Dr. Felton Moss.
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson, and thank you for both your leadership and your administration's work in getting all of these dashboards up. We're really excited about them. Just one quick plug, is it possible to have some sort of integration with our application systems, even if it's just like a link to the website? So if people look at that and say, hey, I can be a special education teacher at that school, they can click it and they can apply then?
I can look into that. Thank you. Dr. Moss?
Yeah, so I'd like to just take this opportunity to celebrate the first 100 days, and there are some incredible folks who are tonight first on the dais because they've never been, and we've just kind of missed that celebratory function. So I just want to celebrate those folks. And so, Dr. Joseph, not to put you on spot, but if you could at least introduce your new folks who, this is their first time coming to the board meeting, but I do want to celebrate the transparent nature of these, these data dashboards. I know Chief Strater was probably somewhere just nerding out, per usual, but I do certainly want to celebrate that. But I think it'll be good to at least welcome these folks to the board meeting.
Sure, we'll do. It feels like we're old spirits, like we've been here for the past 30 days. But I'll start, I'll start here at the dice. So we have Dr. Mauro, who is our new Chief of Schools. We have Denise Douglas, who's our new Associate Superintendent for Communications and Engagement. We have Dr. Ron Watson, who's our interim Senior Advisor to the Superintendent. We have Dr. David Reese, who is our new Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning in the Innovation and Performance clusters. We have Dr. Ed Ryans, who's our new Associate Superintendent for Secondary Schools, High We have Dr. Dana Edwards, who's our new Associate Superintendent for Middle Schools and Charter We have Dr. Latricia Gloucester, who's our new Associate Superintendent for Innovation and Performance. Yes, and we have, you've been here forever. We have Dr. Deanne Collins, who's my new Chief of Staff.
Great. Okay, and we have a new member as well. I just want to give it up for our small member, our student member, the boy Ari. If you want to talk, are you good?
Thank you, everyone. I really do look forward to working with you all and, of course, you know, seeing all your beautiful faces at all of these meetings this year.
Thank you so much. All righty, does that complete your report, Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So moving on to the reports from the committees, I would like to recognize Board Member Walker for the Parent and Community Advisory Council update.
Thank you so much. The Parent and Community Advisory Council, PCAC, has worked diligently over the past several years to strengthen parent and community engagement with Prince George's County Public Schools. So a huge thank you to PCAC members and to provide recommendations to the Board of Education. So a huge thank you to PCAC members and to provide recommendations to the Board of Education. All district and community entity positions were in fact filled this year with the exception of District One. At that time, at this particular time, I'd like to announce the appointment of our District One Representative, Mr. Will Bronson. Mr. Bronson was selected and recommended to the committee by Dr. Tiffany Anderful, District One Board Member, leveraging the list of the Superintendent's recommended applicants as per Policy fifteen hundred. I'd like to also share that the PCAC will hold its retreat on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at the Durant Center in Sutland, Maryland. On behalf of the Parent and Community Advisory Council, I move that the Prince George's County Board of Education approve Dr. Anderful's recommendation through the Superintendent by appointing Will Bronson as the District One PCAC Representative effective August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'm sorry, let me.
All right, so I guess, do we have to take a roll call vote on that, too?
By unanimous vote.
By unanimous vote, all right. If there is, if there are no objection, then the Board accepts the recommendations of Board Member Walker and the PCAC Advisory Committee? All right, motion carries. Moving on to thirteen point two, Policy and Governance.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. A couple of things in our Policy and Governance Report tonight. In accordance with Board Policy eighty-one zero-one, policy development, the following policies are for board consideration and enactment tonight, meaning they're in the final stage of our policy adoption process. Policy zero-one-one-one, which is our sustainability plan, policy zero-one-two-three, artificial intelligence, policy zero-one-two-four, E-rate management, policy thirty-one-twenty, debt management, policy forty-one-thirty-five, activities, organizations, political, and policy fifty-one-fifty, student involvement rights and responsibilities. I'll, I'll just pause and see if there are any questions about those. I got one last time from a board member, so I just want to make sure I pause and see if there are any questions about these policies that are in, up for enactment tonight. No lights, thank you, Chairman. The, the final part of my report is something we are extremely excited about from the Policy and Governance Committee. Our team has been preparing quite aggressively for Legislative Day, which will happen September nineteenth. That team has been led by Board Member Walker. We are engaging in audience with all of our delegates and state senators, and we're just really excited about that. But in order to be set up to be successful for that event, the Policy and Governance Committee met on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and discussed and approved the following legislative priorities and key measures for future success, which will be included in the Board of Education's twenty twenty-six legislative platform and discussed with legislators during Legislative Day. What I will recite to you will be our four priorities going into the legislative session. The first one is special education, and we are deeply committed to ensuring increased funding for multi-tiered systems of support to address the individual needs of students receiving special education services and incentives to attract and retain special educators and related service providers. Number two, we are focused on construction and facilities. Sufficient funding to address PGCPS's urgent need to provide healthy places for our scholars to learn, to renovate aging school buildings, complete infrastructure and facility repairs of our aging school buildings, and receive annual inflation adjustments for new construction costs. I'll say that one again, receive annual inflation adjustments for new construction costs. Number three, am I still allowed to talk, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, because it's the committee reports. So we can keep it going, yeah.
All right, program, number three, programs to address multilingual students' academic achievement challenges. What we're focused on here is sufficient funding to support the provision of a variety of instructional programs for newcomers, integrated academic interventions for long-term English learners, and expanded access to counseling services, all of which are designed to foster both language development and social emotional growth. Our fourth priority is around safe and secure environments for students and staff. We are unapologetically focused on additional grant funding to address safety and security concerns throughout our schools, such as security enhancement devices, vape detector sensors, digital cameras, and alert systems for emergency responses so that our students and staff are safe. While those are our four major priorities, we have a couple of key measures for future success. One, we are adamant about maintaining local board autonomy. Number two, implementation of the blueprint. Number three, adequate school funding. Number four, recruitment and retention of educators. Number five, education enrichment. Number six, student welfare. Number seven, sustainability. Number eight, information technology. Number nine, charter schools. And number ten, the dynamics of legislative amendments. On behalf of the committee, I move that this report be adopted unanimously, unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there is no objection, the Board accepts the recommendations of the P and G Committee. Saying there's no objection, the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Moss. The Chairman now recognizes Dr. Joseph for the Special Education Corrective Action presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson. Special education is a priority for us as a school system as we move into this year, and I'm honored, I'll turn it over, I'll turn it over to Dr. Judith White, our Chief, Chief Academic Officer, who will introduce the team to speak on how, where we are and where we plan on going.
Good evening, Board of Education. Welcome back to a start of an amazing school year. Tonight, we have the honor of having Dr. Trinell, no, I said doctor.
That's right.
Trinell Bowman, our Associate Superintendent for Special Education, to discuss where we are with special education, to discuss our plans with our state, Maryland State Department of Education, and just some of the exciting things that we're doing as we move forward this year to ensure that our students are getting the best possible education. So with that, I turn it over to Ms. Bowman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to share updates related to our Special Education Corrective Action. Thank you, Board of Education members, for all that you do to support special education, and thank you, interim Superintendent Joseph, for your support. Our session outcomes, we're going to look at why we're under a corrective action and what it's going to take to get us out of the corrective action. And then we're also going to look at some systems and structures that we know that we have in place to support our schools with special education processes and procedures. So let's look at the students that we currently serve in Prince George's County Public Schools. As of October first, twenty twenty-four, we serve more than seventeen thousand students with disabilities throughout our district. You can see how that data breaks down by birth to age five, elementary, middle schools, and high schools. We've also provided a link for our special education program locations throughout our district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. On this slide, you will notice our students with disability categories as it relates to our population in Prince George's County. The largest disability category we currently serve are students with specific learning disabilities. We know that they are impacted in reading, mathematics, and writing. Our second highest autism population that we have been watching for many years, you 'll notice that it has gone up three percentage points, is autism. That is our second highest category. Developmental delay is our third highest, and then if you looked at the chart on the right, you'll see how all those disability categories break down for all of our students across the district. And now let's talk about our Special Education Corrective Action. I want you to know that our team sees this as an opportunity to get better and to continue the trajectory of success that we have set out with our special ed strategic plan. Why are we in corrective action is simply two points. One, our special education staff and vacancies, as well as an increase of our state complaints from twenty-three, twenty-four to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And now I'd like to unpack that data for you so that you can see what really led to us going into a corrective action. The first data point that I want to share with you that the Maryland State Department of Education pulled was our special education teacher vacancy. And you could see that as you look at all the LEAs across the state, at the time when the snapshot was taken, Prince George's had the highest number of special ed teacher vacancies at two hundred and forty-two. You could see that we outpaced all other districts as it related to those special ed teacher vacancies. The other thing I wanted to share with you is our twenty-four, twenty-five school year review as it relates to our complaints. We had a hundred and thirty-one complaints that was filed during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and I do want to point out that that was an increase over the previous school year where we only had seventy-nine complaints filed. I do want to note that thirty-five of those complaints that were filed did not have any findings when the state investigated. And so I, I think that's a very important point because sometimes the perception is that when complaints are filed, that all of our complaints, we have findings. I do want to stress that thirty-five of those complaints did not have findings. You'll also see that we had sixty-eight due process complaints, which was an uptick of twenty-five complaints over the previous school year. So these two data points is what led to Prince George's County going into a corrective action. When we look at our state complaints and our due process trend data, you'll see counting down from the least to the greatest. The least finding, number five, was around least restrictive environment and really trying to work with families to determine the appropriate placement. The state, the state has cited us for delaying those decisions and really wanting to move forward with making sure students are placed appropriately. Our number one finding, because has a direct correlation with our vacancies, is our inability to implement IEPs based on those services that were described in their IEP. We know the impact based on these violations. We've talked about this over time, financial costs, paying legal fees to parents, reimbursement for services obtained by parents, tuition costs, as well as systemic corrective action, which is where we are today. This is the components of our district-level corrective action plan. I'm happy to report it has been approved by the Maryland State Department of Education. We also have a technical assistance team that is supporting us, and we're very excited. That team brings a wealth of experience with both local district experience, state experience, and at the federal level. So we're excited to be working collaboratively with them as we work through our corrective action plan. There will be monthly progress reports that will be done and provided updates based on those action items that we have identified. And I do want to emphasize that this is a cross-functional partnership with all of our departments across Prince George's County Public Schools. Let's talk a little bit about our systems and structures that we have put in place to support our schools with implementing special ed in their building. The first thing that we have in place is a special education accountability checklist that provides specific indicators that we are expecting schools to adhere to each month as it relates to special ed. We also have some indicators that may appear quarterly, such as ensuring that progress reports are completed for all students who have IEPs. The second piece that we put in place, and we get better every year with this, is our business intelligence dashboards and reports. And one of the reports that we released last year that I want to highlight is the ability to drill down to every individual student at every individual school to determine if an IEP progress report has been completed. We had over fifty-six thousand goals last year, and I can tell you at every school for every quarter what that data looked like. And so that's, that's a report that we weren't able to do even two years ago. The third item that we have put in place is a Special Education Instructional Planning Considerations Checklist. This checklist really guides leaders in the schoolhouse, how do we plan with the end in mind for students with disability? How do we think about accommodations, supplementary aids, their IEP goals? How do we navigate our special educators, planning with our general educators, and using those evidence-based practices? The fourth guide that we have is our Prince George's County Process Guide. This is a one-stop shop around all processes and navigating special education. Each chapter provides the federal and stat, state regulations, as well as the application to PGCPS policies and what we expect to happen around process, processes for special ed. We also have checklists that if school teams just follow what we have indicated in the checklist, they will remain compliant. We're excited to share the changes that we have made that we believe will benefit our services to students, support our school leaders, and our teachers. The first thing that we've done is we have released a special education report card that identifies specific data metrics. I'm so excited that we're able to look at, look at this data and tier our schools as universal, targeted, and intensive so that we can differentiate the support that the schools need based on their data, which is a game changer for us. We've also looked at our special education instructional specialists, and we have paired them with their skills and abilities to support a magnitude of schools that they're assigned to. One of the other things that's excited and innovative for us is we now have a comprehensive specially-designed team. We have one person that will be assigned to Area One, one will be assigned to Area Two, and another specialist to Area Three to really target those intensive schools and provide coaching and on-the-ground support in classrooms and in buildings. For our compliance specialists, we've taken that same vantage point of really taking two of our specialists to really work on the compliance side around the comprehensive response to our schools based on the results of state complaints, audit findings, and reoccurring issues that we have seen. Again, they will be on the ground, working in our intensive schools, providing that on-the-ground support, helping to chair IEP meetings, model what it looks like to engage families, as well as make sure that those procedures are completed for special ed. We are overly excited about the enhancements we have made to our Family Support Center this year. We're adding another Parent Engagement Instructional Specialist. We're excited that our Family Support Center will be collaborating with our Area Office Resolution Specialists, as well as our Family Engagement Office under Dr. Jackson. We'll leverage our IEP survey data to see what we have concerns around climate, culture, and engaging families, and really target specific training to those schools based on the results of our IEP survey. We will also be meeting with your Board of Education staff just to make sure that they have the tools and the resources on how to approach situations when families may come to them. As you know, we gave you a Board of Education special ed toolkit, but just making sure that they understand what's in that toolkit and how they can support families who may contact your office. We also will be developing vignettes for families on specific topics that'd be less than five to seven, five to seven minutes, that really will help them unpack some of those special ed processes and procedures. And then we will continue to offer weekly office hours, both to our parents as well as to our school teams, as they are navigating challenging cases with parents, that they will have a place to go to really talk through those challenges and how we can work for resolution. We also are looking at enhancing our special education procedures. One piece is around our independent education evaluation process as it relates to payment and reimbursement. For many parents, that our process was a little confusing, and we've gotten feedback to really enhance that. We also are going to release some family support tools around understanding compensatory education services and what that means, as well as virtual speech services. We will also commit to doing an escalation protocol to make sure families, as well as our school team, understand what that process will look like. And then we're excited that we have been able to enhance and some additional positions, both in the Division of Human Resources. We will have a specific special education recruitment advisor, as well as an instructional specialist for professional learning, and then additional positions in special education. During SLI, our Summer Leadership Institute, we met with our principals. We recalibrated expectations around instruction and compliance for special education. You can see those bullets listed here, as well as recalibrated family engagement and what that means. One of the bullets I do want to point out is bullet number two under family engagement, that all schools, all two-hundred-and-one schools, are expected by the first four weeks of school to have a meet and greet for special ed families, to let them know that they are partners, they're important, and we want to collaborate with them. So I'm excited about that. How can you support us, Board of Education? Two ways, both with supporting us with contracts. Contracts will be coming before you to help bridge the gap for special ed vacancies, and then helping us as families contact your office by providing them with this QR code that's linked here so that we can track any follow-up resolution for families. And so those are the two ways that we are asking for your support. This concludes the presentation on our special ed corrective action, and now we will pause for questions.
First, I want to say thank you for making it in under, under time. We starting this year off right. All right, so I'll go to my Board Members. I'll start with Board Member Amy Olivio.
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Ms. Bowman, I wanted to first just say I was able to join the virtual back-to-school event that you and your office held, and I found it to be extremely informative. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And I'll just share that those slides, and I think even a recording of it, are online on your website, so if anybody missed it, I highly recommend taking the time to listen to it. Also, thank you for this, this plan. I think there are some really exciting things ahead. I want- I wanted to ask about language, and also specifically if you have plans to do any of the vignettes or other sort of training for parents in languages other than English. Especially, I'm interested in Spanish, but I know that we have needs in other languages as well.
Yes, so we typically translate. When we look at our population in Prince George's County, our top populations that represent 1% of more students across our district is Spanish and French. So we would definitely do translations in those two languages.
Board Member Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Great presentation. I think the family aspect of it is certainly going to be key with the implementation of it. So with the implementation of all of this, you kind of answered the question, but I'm concerned that there is not going to be enough support, because this is a lot. This workload is a lot. And so I was thinking, do you all have enough support for all that is entailed? I think that's my first question.
I think one of the big pieces, as we reflected this past spring and summer, is how do we leverage our existence to have to be able to work cohesively together? And so one of the things that we reflected upon is that each of our area offices already have resolution specialists that work timelessly with parents, right? They're always working. Dr. Jackson shot, we have parent engagement assistants. And so how do we bring those three offices and departments together to work more cohesively and be able to support schools? And so we feel that bringing those offices together to really have a laser focus on how we engage and support families, we think it will be a win-win, and then we can reassess at the end of the year to see where we are and to see if we feel like there's other supports that we need.
Excellent, thank you. On page 10, they talk, there's a graph that discusses the numbers as far as complaints is concerned. The statewide special education teacher vacancy, excuse me. I noticed we have the highest out of all of our comparable districts that are next to us via Baltimore City, Montgomery County. We're the highest, and so this number was concerning. When we did look at somewhat comparable districts, what is being done that may be not have been adopted in Prince George's County that we can possibly implement from other counties?
So one of the things we'll be doing as part of our corrective action is a review of strategy, both in-state and out-of-state. Our technical assistance team is already pulling some of that data for us, but that is one of the action items that we will be looking at. Is there things that we can do differently? So we're excited about our new recruitment person coming on board for special ed, but that is an action item that I'll be able to report back on once we do a little bit deeper dive with our technical assistance team.
Sure, on page 16.
Remember, Brown, you're not going to have time for another question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll wait if we do second round. Thank you.
Alrighty. Alright, so moving on, I did want to piggyback off of Board Member Brown's question. Was, so I did see the slide deck, and I think that it's amazing that we have a plan moving forward, you know, grounded in, you know, metrics on actually how to quantify where we are as a district. But I think another question that's equally important is, is how did we get here? Having, you know, two, I think it was like 242 or something like that, 242, you know, vacancies, like over 100, you know, 30 or so more than the next closest district. What was the cause of that? Was it, you know, a recruiting issue? Was it attrition? Was it, you know, a cultural issue? Because I believe that if we don't really understand how we got to where we are, then, you know, even though like conceptually we have a plan to go forward, but we still have to retain the talent that we have. So having that huge gap in vacancies is something there that we probably need to address.
So before Trinell jumps in, I would like to just say, before COVID, we did not have this big gap. After COVID, we had a lot of transition and a number of students, the type of students that came into our district. And as she even indicated, from autism, we've even jumped 3%. So probably more than our counterparts in other LEAs, we have grown and grown and grown. And so to address that, we're going to make sure that our IEPs are correct. We're going to make sure that the services are there, which then can increase dedicated aides and special education students. I just would like to really plug, Dr. Baldwin has been really working strategically with Trinell's team even this summer, and especially when Dr. Joseph came to do fairs, vacancy fairs. So we have seen that number go down. For example, you might have seen where last year we would have had 100 dedicated aide vacancies, and right now we have 35. So I think we've got to peel back where we were, how we got here, the number of students and increases we've had over the last five years. And we can bring that data back, because I think that will kind of show a different picture as well.
Thank you, Dr. White. Board Member Moss?
Yeah, I've got one question, but I want to translate this for the public in a way. I think I'm the only board member that's ever, that's up here that's ever been in corrective action or had to get the State Department to approve a corrective action plan. And I want to underscore how difficult that is and the fact that we got the Maryland State Department of Education to approve our corrective action plan. That's enough praise there. School districts submit those things two and three times before it's approved. But I do have a question for, I noticed on Slide 23, principal expectations. You know, one of the things, when I first got on the board and I looked at data, and this team has done a phenomenal job tracking where we have challenges at schools. And often what we found is we have strong systems at the district level that we often struggle to implement at the building level. And so I'm curious around how the schools team and the academics team, I know y'all put this slide together, because I know y'all worked on it together. So I'd love for the public to hear the ways in which we're supporting principals to really make it happen as it relates to special education, because I know that work is taking place. So if you all could potentially voice over that healthy relationship you all are building, I think that'll be great.
Sure, so I'll start. Dr. Morrow, we're a tandem team, so where she goes, I go. And so I think it was about having real conversations. What I love, Dr. Joseph said, is you can't manage a secret. And I think we at this central office have been trying to help manage, and we've had to go back and re-empower principals. And I think that's a commitment from Dr. Morrow and myself to say, what you monitor gets done. And so we jump in and we help and we fix. But in that, are we building sustainable practices? Are we coaching through? Are we putting our staffs in buildings? And are we naming that this is a thing? And now that this is a thing, it's going to be a thing that's owned by everyone, starting at the level of principals that monitor schools, starting with my staff to say, how are we in schools helping them? And us being accountable to look at our own staffs and really, how are we going to engage them and have the right conversations when we don't see the right work moving? And that's our obligation to our families and our obligation to our students. Would you say anything else?
Just to add to that, as we work on implementing this plan, we're working directly with curriculum and instruction, especially at department, to provide targeted professional development for our principals and our school leaders, down to the assistant principals and the teachers, so that we can ensure that this plan is doable. And so it's important that they get the proper training to change the leadership behaviors, and we're trying to align our work is where we're focused this year. So that is important for us to align the work from pre-K to 12.
And the only last thing I will add, and I know the buzzer went off.
Yeah.
The last thing I would just add is when you heard Trinell say that we're going to do a meet-and-greet in every single school, we've never done that. So it could be that some principals were doing that, but we're going to do that in every single school, because we want our families to know you are welcome. We want the culture, when they come in the building, to be that they are welcome.
The only other thing I'd add, and I know the bell rang, but it's important. The enemy of excellence in school systems is variance, right? And so one of the things we're charged to do as a central office is to mitigate the differences that we see between how things happen in different schools. Just today, I charged Dr. Morrow with leading her associate superintendents, the instructional directors, and key leaders from Dr. White's team and other teams across the district to develop a monitoring calendar for principals. Where we, in special education, and I spoke to Dr. Bowman today, we had our one-on-one, and I talked to her about ensuring that in that monitoring calendar, we're specific and explicit about what we expect for special education each month. There'll be, you know, so because if it's going to be a priority, there has to be consistent messaging. So when, you know, our 16 instructional directors go to support our 201 schools, everybody's saying the same thing. It's very clear what data we're looking for, what the expectations are as we go through looking through special education classes. So in doing that, we know we're decreasing the variance in expectation. And that's going to make a tremendous difference as we work to collectively have a more coherent approach to how we address this particular issue.
Thank you. Board Member Goines-McKens?
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. And thank you all both, and your teams, for all of the hard work that, well, I should not say both, all of you all for the collaborative effort to get this plan not only approved, but to actually start to see the changes implemented. I'm going to try to keep this really brief, because I know you all can talk a long time, and we are on a timer. What specifically is happening to ensure that we are reducing these special education vacancies? And in that plan, have we leveraged the expertise of our current special education teachers to create that plan?
Thank you for the question. So what I would say is, we definitely have a staffing committee. And so there's a lot of work that that special ed staffing committee will be doing this year to really look at, you know, is there ways to incentivize people coming to our district? So we have been charged with part of that plan with coming up, with looking at, you know, recruitment, looking at retention. Is there incentivizing that we need to do? How do we look at pipeline? How do we look at our support staff? We have excellent support staff that support our students, and we've seen them rise last year, especially with our vacancies. But how can we build a pipeline for them to come into special education and be licensed to be able to teach? So we are looking to explore things that we feel that would be worthy for Prince George's County to implement, and that's part of that corrective action. And that's why I think the technical assistance team is going to be good for us, because they're coming from the U.S. Department of Ed. A couple of them worked at U.S. Department of Ed, and so they know what was happening good around the country and things that can be leveraged in our district for consideration. But I would say in the interim, we are leveraging partners to be able to look at case management. So that's one of our exciting pieces that we'll be leveraging, is that we found a partner or vendor that actually provides case management services. The first of a kind, I've never heard of a company being able to provide case-managed special educators to do case management. So that's going to be a game changer for us. So that's just an example of us thinking out of the box and trying to do things more innovatively.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much, Chair Jackson. And thank you, Dr. White and Ms. Bowman, for the presentation. I thought it was really, it expounded a lot on the things that I think are necessary for the community to know. I did have some questions that I thought were curiosities of mine and perhaps they're curiosities of others. And so I was hoping that you could either speak to this now or you can share this information later if you don't have it right now. So can you speak to the common violation findings on Slide 12? So from my observation and review, what appeared to be, you can correct me here, the through line is a failure to complete legally mandated responsibilities. But what wasn't clear was whether that is due to negligence or time challenges, i.e. teachers finding time in their day, special education educators finding time in their day to do these things. So do we know exactly what's driving this? If it's a lack of time, which of the interventions are addressing that specific issue, if it is?
Yeah, I would say it's a combination of both, in true transparency. And that could be negligence, not because we want negligence, negligence because I'm new and I don't know my job, negligence because we hire a teacher that's brand new and it takes time to really understand the timelines that have to be in place. We can, at another time, provide you with the breakdown of the 131 and how many fell into this, because many of them did fall simply because we did not hit a date. And so we can provide more clarity on where they fell in all five for you.
Okay, yeah, that would be really helpful, because I was wondering where, like if there was a matrix of issues, and I really appreciate seeing the findings and just how those correlated with the specific issues. And then also for the impact of violations, can you speak more to the financial cost from the provision of compensatory education services to students? Is this a penalty from the Feds?
So the Individuals with Disability Education Act does require, if students miss services, that IEP teams convene and determine if there's been an educational impact. So when we look at missed services of a student didn't have a special educator, didn't get interventions because of a vacancy, et cetera, we are required by law to convene an IEP team to look at a variety of data, attendance data, benchmarks, state assessments, DIBELS, all type of data, to determine, did the student continue to make progress in spite of the vacancy? If the answer is yes, then that would mean that there is not an impact. If the answer is no, the team would have to determine what that impact looked like and what compensatory services would be awarded.
Okay, thank you so much.
Board Member, Dr. Anavil?
Thank you, Chair Jackson. Thank you so much, Dr. White and Ms. Bowman, for this report. Extremely helpful. Some of the questions I had have already been answered, so I just have one hopefully rather simple question. And this is just for my understanding. So I heard Dr. Joseph, of course, reference a monitoring calendar. I see there's reference to a number of different monthly, you know, checklist. We have a monthly checklist. We have now a new special education report card. Love that I'm seeing a lot of things around accountability, but can you speak specifically to kind of how all of these things will work together? I'm hearing a lot of different things. I'm having a hard time kind of differentiating between them and understanding how they'll all work together.
Sure, I would say that, so when we give a report card, we start the school year, we start with a data set. So we made sure that every school had a data set, and your data set talked about your special education in your building and where you fell. The accountability checklist is what will drive a principal. So what they need to know is every month, it tells them all the things that should happen every single month. Our team will do the rest. Our team knows when they drop in. So for example, when we know on the accountability checklist there should be progress reports for students, this year we want to make sure that we have office hours two and three weeks prior to that for teachers to drop in and get assistance. So we're going to make sure that it flows together so that it's not all of these isolated events. And I can see how for the outside, it looks like isolated events. All we want principals to do is to follow the accountability checklist. We put everything in that process, and we will do the rest to make sure it all flows.
Yeah, and let me just add, we've got an execution problem in our county. We've got an execution problem. We've got so many plans, we've got plans for plans here. And one of the things we've talked about as a cabinet in these last 40 days are our abandonment goals. So before we move into our strategic plan and get into the things, we're going to be explicit at the October meeting with principals about what we're not doing anymore, that plan that we can just put on the shelf because it didn't work. And so, you know, when I talked about the monitoring calendars and things, it's, the key is, and that's why we talked about having a cross-functional team together. So it's that collaborative team to sit down to say, what's most essential that we can monitor, that can be doable and implementable, that we can communicate, you don't have to do this stuff anymore, lock in on this, and let's be consistent and calibrate about how we're following up is what's going to be critical, so we can better execute.
Thank you. Board Member Walker?
This is easy. Hi, you know, I am such a fan of the work that comes out of the academics department, so thank you all so much for the thoroughness that you always bring to us and always being so forward-focused. You know, a vast majority of what I hear within the community is the robustness of the IEP plan, adherence to it, implementation, accountability, all those things that you've already talked. So without going into some of the questions that you've already answered tonight, I did just want to let you know, a heads up. I'm going to be asking if you all can come back in six months just to give us a highlight of where we are so that you have time to really implement the work that you've already started. And I didn't want that to come as a surprise. As you work hard to kind of shift the culture, because this is a culture shift that's happening. It's reports that's not going to be used anymore. And so thank you in advance for your work, but I'm going to just be asking for you all to come back and just give us where we are, because I know we hear, I hear, a lot about IEPs and adherence. And I think you all are doing some great work in that direction. Thanks.
Thank you. And the great thing is, Board Member Briggs and I have special education as one of the topics for Academic Achievement Committee, and so we'll come there twice as well, so we will be prepared to do so.
Alright, I think that was everyone for round one, so we're going to move to round two. I'll go back to Board Member Brown, because I know she had some questions she wanted to ask.
Yes, thank you so much. I just had two more questions. The first one is, when we go to Slide 16 or Page 16, you guys talk about the checklist. Slide 16 or page 16, you guys talk about the checklist. I was curious as where the content came from and were you all able to get state or other stakeholders involved as far as the checklist was concerned?
So part of the checklist are essential procedures that we must follow. So I'll give you an example of a checklist item. If if you are experiencing a vacancy at your school, you must send notification to the parent. That's something that is required by COMAR, so that's something that's non negotiable. So everything and we tried to streamline it because we had 50 things on a checklist and we had to bring it in, right? And so we have left the bare minimum things that we know principals need to concentrate on that's required. And so the majority of what's in our checklist are things that are required by law. I'll give you another example. In the spring, we look at holding articulation meetings for students who are transitioning from elementary to middle, middle to high. That's not required under IDEA and COMAR, but that's something that is very important as students are transitioning in those terminal years. So those are just two flavors of examples of what we would have on the checklist.
Excellent. And then just my last question is, I think on page 17, has the dashboard been implemented? And is it going to be available for to the public for transparency? My only concern was is there any PII on the documents and can we ensure that scholars' information will be protected?
Yes, so our dashboard is internal because of the PI, the personal identified information. Because it does have specific information pertaining to services of students, schools. But I think that's something that we can talk about in exact cabinet to see if there's any components of the dashboard that could be publicly available.
Thank you.
Board Member Olivo.
Thank you Chair Jackson. I just wanted to say again how much I appreciate kind of the the discussion around the execution issues and the consistency issues. I am the parent of a PGCPS graduate who is part of the special education program. And there were certainly years where he received excellent, on time reviews. And there were years when he did not. And so I know that the ability is there and getting that consistency to serve every child is crucial. I wanted to ask specifically about, on slide 11, just to call out. We had a pretty significant increase in complaints from last year. But when you look at that asterisk that 41 of them were from the same filer. We really just had a rather minimal increase if you take out that 41. And I'm certainly not asking for any personal information, but I'm wondering if if you, the school system knows who that is? And has perhaps been able to provide some special. Help and services to that particular family? Because I can only imagine the level of frustration that you must get to if you are submitting your 41st complaint. And again, I'm not asking for any information, but just wanted to also note that that the. It is a very large spike, but you know, by complainant, perhaps not such a large spike.
And thank you for pointing that out because we did have that conversation with the Maryland State Department of Education. But for that particular filer, one of my compliance liaisons works directly with that family and is at the school at least two full days a week. Supporting the school and supporting the family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to Board Member, oh. Okay, all right, our student board member.
Okay, hello everyone. First, I want to say thank you for giving this wonderful presentation and you know, for even taking these crucial steps to close the vacancies that we are currently experiencing. As an older sister of a special education PGCPS student who's going to eighth grade, I do want to ask, what are the steps or the plans that will be taken? To retain like the teachers and the staff once the vacancies close up so that we do not experience another big vacancy in the future?
That was such a great question. Thank you. That is definitely an area of focus on retention strategies. We have put together some ideas of what we can think about around retention that we'll be bringing forward. That may have some financial impact, but we'll continue to work through our corrective action. And then we can come back in the next six months just to provide an update. We'll be able to share what some of those recommendations are that come out of our cross functional teams. The other thing our technical assistance team will be doing is meeting with parents, meeting with staff and meeting with principals. To really think, to talk through some of those pieces around recruitment, retention, what do you think you need, what ideas do you have? So that is some of the pieces that our technical assistance team will be doing throughout the district.
The only thing I'll add to that, I know Ms. Bowman is answering a lot of human resource questions. And we would not be able to do this work without Dr. Baldwin and her team who've been amazing to move this work.
And I'd just add that we we need to focus on organizational culture. You know, it's one of the big rocks we've identified that we've talked to the unions about, you know, a compact of respect. And we've also got to look at workload. And and I think we have to look at how technology can help us be more efficient in some of the things that we're doing. Because people are stressed out. It's a it's a hard job. And I think since the pandemic, coming back into work is challenging for people and it was already a hard job. And so so we're looking at all of that.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you so much Chair Jackson. So my last question was just, well, actually I had two questions. One was around the tracking of students. So I really appreciated seeing the graph of all the different. Unique populations of students that we have in the district. But I was curious if there were any intersecting disabilities. So for example, a student with an emotional disability and a specific learning disability, is there data on that? And then if so, how is that mitigated? You know, is that specific student going to multiple specialists for something? Is that an area of, is that a significant area of gap? Can you speak to any of those things?
So there is a category called multiple disabilities where a student could have a cognitive impairment and like a visual or be deaf as an example. So we can tease that out, but what happens in the IEP process is that that team determines what are the related services a student may need? Do they need occupational therapy? Do they need vision services? Do they need speech and language? Do they need physical therapy, orientation, mobility? What does the goals look like in the intervention? So those are individual team decisions that are made in the context of an IEP meeting.
Okay, I got it. And I just want to be clear. So when we're thinking about these checklists and all these interventions that exist, is there like a targeted specialist that would say, oh, this specific school has a number of intersecting disabilities? They need more support. Is there any?
Yes, so we definitely look at that in terms of the population is that is at a school in terms of strategy. So if we see that we have a high autism population, we do make sure that there's visual cues, visual schedules. We train on transition. So based on the student population and our dashboard allows us to drill down to the disability categories that are at every single student. I mean, every single school in Prince George's County so that we can provide that targeted assistance through our central office experts.
Okay, thank you so much. And then this this may bring some pleasure to you in the last 30 seconds. But I saw a lot of acronyms and was curious about what some of these things meant. So can you speak a bit about the different special education programs, specifically the CE program, the regional school program and the community referenced instruction? Either of those, unfortunately.
So our CE program stands for social, emotional, academic development. So those are students that have emotional disabilities, that are diploma bound. We have them in elementary, middle and high schools. Our regional program, our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities who will receive a certificate of completion. And they're accessing essential elements or essential. Standards or adaptive standards as it relates to the state standards. And our community reference instruction program are also students with significant cognitive disabilities. Who are accessing an alternate instructional framework, who will ultimately get a certificate of completion.
And at the recommendation of a parent that worked with us when we shared our documents because we're trying to really get input. We added an addendum to break apart all of them so that you know all the definitions. So that was something that we were missing.
Thank you, Dr. Moss.
Yeah, thank you all for answering all these questions tonight. I do want to, Dr. White, you cited a data finding that I think is really important for the public to hear. There's this, there are these alternative facts, if you will, that we have 100 kids who don't have the dedicated aid who are working with them. But it's my understanding that we've we've sliced that number. We've we've acknowledged that there are some challenges in that regard. So can you talk about where we are with that now, what that means that we've shut that, we've been able to close that gap and how we did it? I think that'll be helpful for the general public just to make sure we get the correct facts out there as regard to students having a dedicated aide.
Sure, it was reported that we were at 100 and you know, our data is ever changing. And again, Dr. Baldwin's staff is continually looking for dedicated aides along with Trinell's team. And so right now, as we open school, we're down to 35 students. And we are actively, I believe they have been working actually on a plan right now to how to close that gap quickly. So we are working on it, we are identifying and we're not sitting back for our families. It is important to us that our students have support. And what we also indicated is that where a student may not have a dedicated aide right now, those 35. We're working with schools to put plans in place in those buildings to ensure that the students still receive the support they need.
Yeah, I'm curious. This is a question for the superintendent. You got on the radio and said that we've got dog insurance for folks who want to work. So is there any other incentives for folks that might be watching who would like to become a dedicated aide? I didn't get the dog insurance when I signed up to be a school board member, but might have to get that. But are there other incentives out there to recruit folks to become dedicated aides?
So two things we're looking at. We are looking at the the compensation and the insurance provision. That's been a drawback for our aides. We're also working with our Prince George's apprenticeship program and looking to see if there are any matches that can be made. To have those, that workforce that's readily available, looking for jobs to come on to do that.
Dog insurance, folks, dog insurance.
Thank you. All right, so and I did I did have one question. So as we as we, you know, map out our pathway forward, I guess my question is like, what is the the North Star? Because it, I mean, it seems to be that there was a cultural issue. But like, who is the gold standard of special education? You know, not just in Maryland, but throughout the United States in general. And what are they doing that we aren't doing? And how can we implement what they're doing to bring us up to standard? And I mean, when I'm standard, like, you know, everybody wants to work for Google or Cisco or Wegmans. Like these are like known to have great culture. So I'm like, what school system, and you don't have to say it, but I mean, have you taken the time to do do the research and find the gold standard? And how are we going to get PGCPS to be on that same level?
So thank you for that question. I do want to share with the board, I am in a think tank with LA Unified, New York City Public Schools, Philadelphia City Public Schools, Broward County, Chicago. And other large districts. I've done problems of practice and I'm going to be real frank and say they love the things that we're doing in Prince George's County. And they often ask me to send things that we're doing. So I just want to commend the work that we've done in Prince George's County. But I do want you to know that I do meet with those large districts and we're in a collaborative together. So I'm constantly looking at ways to improve. Our tiered systems of support model that we have designed was done because of our partnership with Gwinneb County in Georgia. They implemented a tiered systems of support model with a report card. We spent two years talking with them and a lot of those ideas that were birthed in our tiered systems of support actually came out of another district. So we're always looking for ways to be innovative and think differently around special ed. And we'll continue to do that.
Excuse me, are there any more questions? Okay, thank you. Moving forward to the consent agenda, the board chair recognizes Dr. Joseph for the consent agenda items.
Thank you Chair Jackson. My first meeting, would you prefer that I just read through each one or just can you, can I go from recommend a block from 151?
The block, yeah.
The block, yes, thank you. Okay, just making sure. So so board, I am recommending that the board approve consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.26.
Thank you. Thank you, board members. Would you like to pull any of these items for discussion under general orders? Okay. If there is no, if there are no objections, the consent agenda items 15.1 through 15.26 will be adopted. Yeah, yeah. Alrighty, so at this time, the chairman and Dr. Joseph will publicly sign the local 2250 contract. So invite you to the. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, there is no unfinished business, general orders. So the board chair recognizes Dr. Felton Moss for his comment on Office of Integrity and Compliance.
Yeah, thank you so much Chair Jackson and colleagues of the board. I will have two motions at the end of this conversation, but I thought it'd be important to uplift to the board. Let me let me articulate first. No one is more passionate about finding fraud, waste and abuse in a school system than me. And so I want to articulate that and hence, actually Board Member Walker might be, you know, more adamant about it than me. So I want to make sure I give her credit. She over there corrected me. But you know, and that's precisely why I have an item before the board on tonight. It was brought to my attention, unfortunately, that a contract was executed between the Prince George's County Board of Education and the Integrity and Compliance Officer. That was effective January 29, 2024. A quick query actually determined that that executed contract never went before this board. And that executed contract precisely provided for compensation for an Office of Integrity and Compliance Director. And to my concern, that same contract essentially provided for a car for the Integrity and Compliance Officer. And that was concerning for me that it did not go before this board. And so tonight, I'm going to ask that this board supports my motion in researching the validity of that contract, ensuring that it was executed in a full fidelity. There is a signature on that contract by the board chair then, was not board member Walker. It was the board chair prior to board member Walker who signed that contract. I just want to make that clear tonight. But you know, what I did in my research, I learned that just this week, I asked the administration to articulate to me what was going on with cars that were part of that contract. And I found that there were two cars assigned to the office. And one, a fraudulent contract is concerning to me. But I also found wasteful spending around two cars. One that was given to the Office Integrity and Compliance Director. Must I admit, as a Prince Georgian, I'm a newer Prince Georgian, so they fuss at me sometimes because I haven't been here my whole life. But as a taxpayer and Prince Georgian, I learned that that car is being driven to Howard County and commuted to work every day. And so that is concerning for me. And there's a second car that is assigned to that office that is most concerning to me that is being driven by a contractor who is not a PGCPS employee. And so we would assume the liability for that. And so my first motion tonight is to investigate the validity of the contract and whatever needs to happen to make that contract valid, we need to do that. We're all concerned with fraud, waste, and abuse. But secondarily, my motion tonight would ask that my colleagues would ask that the superintendent administration halt usage of any PGCPS cars for both of those individuals until we've gotten back to determine the validity of this contract. So those are my two motions tonight.
So I got two motions, and you might want to put those in writing. So one is to conduct an investigation on the validity of the Office Integrity Compliance contract.
With the director.
With the director. So I'll pause and ask, is there any discussion? Board member Boozer Struthers?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Moss for bringing this forward. I've shared the same concerns about this office from the very start. And I think this is an appropriate action this evening. Thank you.
Are there any, you got a comment? Are you ready to vote? Are there any other comments? Okay, so I do have a comment on this first motion. So, so yes, I wholeheartedly agree with the question of the validity of the contract. I was actually on the board. I'm one of the, I guess, more tenured board members. Me, Jonathan, and Lolita and Pam, this little group right here, right here holding it down. So I don't, I don't recall ever taking a vote on this. We didn't, yeah. So we didn't take a vote on this contract. So I definitely think this is something that warrants further investigation to find the validity of the contract. Absolutely. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Alrighty, I think we need to take a roll call vote on this. Ms. McMillan, please take the vote.
Dr. Underfield? Aye. Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Goines McCants?
Aye.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Olivo?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
There are nine in the affirmative.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so the second one. So, so I just want to make sure I got your motion right. I don't know if you could write it down for me too. But it's asking the superintendent to halt usage of the cars until the contract is proven valid?
I changed one language about that. I wouldn't ask the superintendent. I'd like for us to require the superintendent to stop usage of the vehicle pending investigation into the validity of the contract.
Both vehicles, contracted vehicle too. Okay, so with that being said, I'll pause for discussion from the board. Dr. Moss?
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to explain once again the seriousness of this for me. When I was looking into this, I found that, you know, we don't have any other employees in the district other than a superintendent who has an agreed-upon contract with the board as it relates to a car. And certainly, it would take a board to, if that car is going to be driven to another county within our state, and we would have to furnish the gasoline for that to happen. And so that is precisely concerning for me on a number of fronts. And then I just want to finally say, not to get too much into the nature of the work, but if you look at the investigations that have been conducted in just a short time of the year, all of them have been desk audits and wouldn't require one to need to be as mobile to have their own car to be able to do that. I wouldn't put a motion on the table tonight, but us board members travel to more schools on a weekly basis than this office. And so I would fully expect that the citizens of Prince George's County would expect us to be good stewards of our resources. And it's just as much as this office was founded to find fraud, waste, and abuse. I find it ironic that this is the case. And so I hope tonight that you all will support this motion.
Thank you. Any more comments? All right, so I do have a comment, just for a point of clarity. I mean, we're giving out cars. Could I get a car too? I'm just joking. But one thing that I did, I did want to say is that when it comes to, when it comes to the travel time, so I just wanted clarity. So you're saying that this car is going from Sasser to home and back from Sasser to home? And then the contractor has the ability to travel from home to work as well? And that's the primary purpose or use of the car?
Mr. Chair, are you asking me to respond?
Yes, yeah, I'm asking you to respond, please.
Yeah, so to help us out a bit, so there are two cars and they have assigned numbers. One is thirty-three thirty, the other one is forty-three seventy. Thirty-three thirty is assigned to Mr. Frank Turner the second. It's a twenty-twenty-three Ford Explorer. This car is taken, is a take-home vehicle. The driver lives in Howard County, Maryland. Four-three-seven-eight is assigned to a contractor. It's a two thousand and four Chevy Impala. The vehicle is not a take-home vehicle. It is a contractor that lives in another state as well. And also, but that person doesn't have fueling rights in the way that Mr. Turner does. And so I hope I answered your questions, Mr. Chair.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. So the question is, shall the Prince George's County Board of Education adopt the requirement of the superintendent to halt usage of both vehicles until the contract is proven valid? Ms. McMillan, please take the role.
Dr. Underfield?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Briggs?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Goines McCants?
Aye.
Dr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Olivo?
Aye.
Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
There are nine in the affirmative.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. There is no new business tonight? Okay, and then adjourned. So we want to thank you all for joining us tonight. To our meeting, all our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business. The time is now eight forty-seven. And August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting is adjourned.